We have scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda is approved. Councilor Graves is away, so obviously that means he's not here, in case you had trouble putting those two things together. Are there any announcements from members of council for any upcoming activities? Councilor Fergier?
Yes, Your Worship. A few from the museum. On June 26th, there's a pollinator party and pest detest workshop by helping nature heal. Drop into the event at the museum gardens, learn how to attract pollinators and deter pests. Come, dress for the weather. And on June 27th, between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m., it's multicultural day for everyone. It's free. Join us for our barbecue cricket drumming games and activity as we celebrate our many cultures on the South Shore. And a few events for the programming for June 29th at 2:00 p.m. at the museum. Join us for a quilt lecture and appraisal by certified quilt appraiser Diane Schink. Lecture is $5 and quilt appraisers are $10 each. So that's on June 29th at 2:00 p.m. July 3rd at 2:00 p.m., we have an historic pleasant street walking tours. Learn more about some of Bridgewater's oldest home and the families that reside here. Tour starts in front of the St. Paul's Lutheran Church at 25 Phoenix. Wear comfortable walking shoes, hope to see there. Recommended $5 donation, weather permitting.
Great. Thank you. Councilor McDonald.
July 1st is approaching quickly, and the Canada Day on Le Havre celebrations are a little bit different this year. We're really excited to be partnering with the Social Multicultural Association who will run events during the day from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at shipyards landing. There's a lot of really great activities lined up and a really great way to celebrate our diversity and what we all share here in Lunenburg County. And then at 5:00, we'll shift back down to Fijin Nuisca Park. Did I get it? I got it? And some of our more traditional celebrations that you're used to, followed by the fireworks in the park. So they're on the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page and website and in the local newspapers and media outlets. You'll see this week a schedule of events that'll kind of break down the details of what's happening.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements from members of council? I'll just quickly say that in case anyone has missed the news, there was a federal announcement this morning at 11:00, right across from the Cormorant and some of the other derelict vessels there, that the Coast Guard will begin its formal assessment process of the Cormorant, which is the first step in having that ship removed from our waterfront, which is fantastic news. I've watched some of the comments on Facebook and I know people are a little, they're kind of going down that road of "I've heard this before," but I can say that this is the first time I've actually seen the Coast Guard onsite at the announcement, a representative from the Coast Guard explaining the next steps that they're going to take. So I do see this as a good news story for the, not just the town, but the community. We look at those ships, I don't know if everyone else does, but every time I drive by, I look at that and I think, "I think it's tipping just a little bit more, just a little bit more." And it starts to worry me, as I know it has many around this table just a couple of years ago when it was halfway on its side, and we don't want to see that again. So I appreciate that it looks like something's going to happen. So I'm choosing to look at this as definitely glass half-full, because any announcement's better than no announcement. And so I see this as a happy day for our community. That's it for...
Sorry, more? So just, I wanted to announce that the South Shore Triathlon, it was a difficult decision, but for a number of reasons, that has been canceled for this year. Check back to see, you know, what the plans are for next year, as well as, I'm sorry, I'm probably not going to have dates right. There's a delay in the opening of the outdoor pool.
July 8.
And I don't remember when it's, July 8?
July 8.
Okay. Just for everyone's awareness, there's lots of great work happening there. The pool is really getting a refresh, and it's going to be very exciting, so the wait will be well worth it.
For sure, yep. Anything else? No? Larry, I thought you had your hand up for a second. No? No announcements? Don't talk about paving projects that are coming up?
Exciting.
And we'll just, maybe I'll, you know what, there's a great opportunity to remind people that we put over a million dollars in the budget this year to deal with pavement management. And so we can't in one day pave all the streets in town, but the money has been set aside. We waited for the asphalt plant to open. It's open, crews are out. We will, we will get to them. But our roads, we know our roads are in rough shape, because every road in the province is in rough shape, and so we're, we are getting to them. See, you could have made that announcement. That would have been, you would have been like a hero. So, Larry can have the credit for that one. All right, down to presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Thorburn, who's a member on our Heritage Advisory Committee for presentation.
Thank you, Worship. Fellow councilors?
Now, you're going to go to the podium for the microphone?
Yeah. I have been president of the Heritage Advisory Committee for the last three years, and we've been doing great things. In the last year or so, we've been extremely busy. So I will give you a quick report. At the end of May 2018, on behalf of the Heritage Advisory Committee and in partnership with the Bridgewater Museum Commission, I presented the 2018 Built Heritage Award to Nick and Amanda Wenzel on their property at 319 King Street. The committee's mandate is to promote and preserve the heritage in the history of the town in Bridgewater. The committee advises council and consults with other committees of council with respect to built heritage matters and making recommendations for street and park names. While it's understood the committee is limited, and it can go directly to protect built heritage in our community, the group believes that a holistic approach to heritage conversation will be necessary to change the way the community understands values and ultimately protects built heritage. It can be developed an action plan in 2012, and has since achieved every gold and objective from that plan, but only a few remain, and they will be likely finished this year. During the past year, the Heritage Advisory Committee has completed quite a bit, and I'd like to share some of the successes. In July, the committee's finished up Brookside Cemetery signage, which was a three-year project to install, installed an interpretive panel. The panel displays the origin and history of the cemetery, information pertaining to the status as a municipal heritage property, and a map showing the path names. The path name protects, project was a donation from the public and has been recently completed. Throughout the summer, the Heritage Advisory Committee students have worked hard to develop a social media presence, research, create built heritage profiles for many properties to add to the town's built heritage website, lead heritage tours, and be the committee's representative at events such as Canada Day on Le Havre and the Big X. This summer, students will have active similar duties in addition to having already explored grant funding and incentives available for municipal heritage property. October brought with the conclusion of two projects, including one of the whole Trinity and Church Cemetery cleaned up, and that was organized by my vice chair, Peter Eichel, and the Heritage Advisory Committee, with a group of volunteers got together and removed undergrowth and bush and debris from the historic cemetery and the municipal heritage site, which was used as a burial prior to Brookside Cemetery becoming nominational. October 18th, the town's newest heritage property was unveiled as part of Bridgewater's Better Block Initiative, during which committee and museum offered a built heritage display. The old post office officially become the fifth municipal heritage property in Bridgewater, and the fourth addition to the registry in the last five years. During the last year, the committee's been working on creation of a heritage guide. This guide and design manual is aimed at the owners of property with a residential architectural control area to help with any exterior alterations. The committee commissioned a local artist to sketch architectural styles and details, research best practice restoration and rehabilitation techniques, and consulted with the town's community development department to appoint where the guide is nearly complete and ready for distribution. The big project for the 2018 '98 fiscal year has been to memorize the site, memorialize the site of the first Girl Guide cabin in Canada, by ordering a commemorative stone for placement at the corner of Dominion and Churchill Street. Well, that stone was installed on the 14th of June, and we are going to have the ceremony on July the 1st at 10:00 p.m. It looks awesome. If people want to drive by, there's been numerous invitations gone out to all groups associated with or part of the Girl Guide cabin. And I believe it was the second oldest Girl Guide cabin in Canada. But it's going to be done on July the 1st. And at this time, I would like to thank the town for their staff and their help. Nick has been a great asset to our committee and done some amazing work, and we really appreciate what him and other staff members has done, and it's special thanks to our committee. We started out with three members in 2000, December 2017, and then we've got Chris Bedford and Art Fisher on board, and then in January, Dan Runhead came on board, 2018, January, and that gave us a full complement. So we're operating at a full complement, and we have a couple of properties up for recognition again this year. So at this time, I will bring up Vice Chair Peter Eichel to help me with the presentation of our award.
Mayor Mitchell, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure this evening on behalf of the Bridgewater Heritage Advisory Committee and the Bridgewater Museum Commission to announce the latest recipient of the Built Heritage Award. This is an annual award that's, we started a number of years ago, given to recognize a person for the work that they've done to preserve an existing building, and trying to keep it as close to its original as possible. There are two members, one who do the selection process, one comes from the HAC and another from the museum commission, and they look at recommendations that they have of their own. And again, Nick, if it wasn't for Nick providing some of that detail, we would probably take much longer in the process. So we review that, and a recommendation goes to each of those groups, and once it's been accepted, then contact is made with the individual. And this year, it's my great pleasure to announce that the recipient, this is Alan Mossman, and I'll give you a little bit of information about his home. It's just off the Veterans Bridge, as you know, the property, and it is considered the oldest existing home in Bridgewater and stands overlooking the river. It's at 553 Le Havre Street, and it's traditionally known as the Ramey House. This home may have been built as early as 1770 and would have sat in what was then East Bridgewater. The Ramey House has remained a family to various families, including five generations of the Ramey family for whom the home is named. Mr. Benjamin Ramey was the first Ramey to inhabit the home after buying it in 1851. Benjamin was a lumber merchant and had livestock and chickens across the road, which would be in the superstore parking lot, as well as in a barn behind the house. The home's first owner was a notable man, the very first man who owned it was John Bolman. He was a surgeon, and he was born in Germany, and he performed surgery in the American Revolutionary War. Mr. Bolman lived in Lunenburg for about 54 years, and he owned substantial amount of land in Bridgewater, and he was a representative of Lunenburg County and the host of assembly. The current original structure today is typical of early settler housing. The design is plain and simple, rectangular with a second-story window set tightly to its eaves. Exterior renovations have altered the integrity of the original festation and cladding and other trim elements that the host may have had. However, the host remains in proportion from form and scale of the original house lending itself to its period of origin. So we're very pleased. If Alan and Emily, if you'd like to come on up?
Okay.
Yep. Can I get down like that? Get up. Mayor? We select a person, as I said, and Alan is the latest. It takes a couple of months to come to that, and we appreciate when we had meetings with Alan and he agreed to accept this award. And he's done a lot on the property, and if you have any opportunity down to focus on it, when you go over to him. Thank you.
Is there any questions from council? If not, that's into my report.
Thank you both. Moving on to delegations, we have Frances Kangadis here from Nova Scotia Health Authority to talk about cannabis legalization and municipal considerations. We have, as you know, Frances, you have 10 minutes, not including the questions that council may have.
I'll do my best.
I made a small change to the presentation. We've got to be able to share it with you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Yeah, apologies for that. Sorry. We've been, we've been having conversations with the staff around cannabis for quite a while now, and I guess the culmination of that was, we felt that council has not had an opportunity to have a real discussion about cannabis, and so between the planning department and us, we thought it might be a good opportunity for us to do so. And I think today is very timely, because there was an announcement based on what the discussions that we wanted to have. So you might be asking yourself, "Why am I here and why now?" This probably should have been maybe last year, when cannabis was being legalized. We haven't gotten to, we haven't got to all the councils around. We've made presentations to some, but this is just part of the process. We, from a health promotion perspective, we know that the sky is not falling, so to speak, because cannabis is legalized. Cannabis has been with us for quite a while. So it'll take us a little bit for us to get used to the idea that cannabis has become legal, but the sky is not falling. Today, I wanted to cover just these six things. It will be very quick, because I only have 10 minutes. Consider it as an introduction to the topic, and maybe in the future, we can have a more lengthy discussion. So I'll focus on why legalize and regulate, talk about the process a little bit from the federal, provincial, and municipal levels. Edibles is a, I guess, a new, I call it wicked problem that we'll have, because it introduces a new set of things that we have to consider as community focus. And then I'll give some, some brief considerations of specific areas that you might want to think about, and then maybe talk about is there a role for the Town of Bridgewater and council to consider that? So like I said, we just want to initiate a conversation and talk about what your role would be. Now, if you think about substances, and one thing I should have said, a caveat I should have put out there, there will be images and cartoons probably in the, in the presentation. They do not necessarily represent Nova Scotia Health Authority values, or ideas about how things should go. They're, from my perspective, they're just a way to get some information out there in a very easy-to-consume form. So do not, do not take it as NSHA values. It's just a way to present the information. So if you think about substances in general, we've had some substances with us for a very long time, and the idea that some substances are illegal is fairly new, if you think about human history. When I, when I say fairly new, I talk about the 1900s. So if you think about human history, the length of time we've been on Earth, it's quite, it's quite lengthy for us to just decide in the 1900s that a substance is illegal. So from, from this, you can see that we used to use cocaine for toothpicks, cannabis for some different kinds of ailments. And so making substances illegal has, has come about because of various issues, and predominantly is the idea that other people are different from us. First and foremost, in the United States, making substances illegal has a lot to do with racism, has a lot to do with one particular person deciding, because they did not have the prohibition mandate, when prohibition ended, they had to look for other substances or other things that they could be able to tackle, and cannabis and other drugs became that particular issue that they could, they could do, that they could follow up with. So you might ask, "Well, we've made them illegal in the 1900s, why make them legal now? Is there a case for that?" Now, thinking about, about this particular idea, I'm sharing with you the paradox of prohibition. I guess, a model that was developed in the UK by a professor called Dr. John Marks. He, he basically put it out there that if you look at when we mix a substance illegal, we increase the harms, because we're making that substance go into the illegal market. And from that perspective, you do not have any oversight on, on the quality, where it's coming from, and how it's being distributed, and how it's being used. When you make it legal and sort of liberalize everything without any kind of regulations, you swing the pendulum to the other side whereby it's legal, maybe quality can be assured and all those things, but there's a lot of commercialization that comes with that, whereby profits are the, I guess, the main consideration. So you've allowed corporates to make money off a substance, and you can think about some of the substances we have, like tobacco. We know that it's a killer. It's the only, one of the only things that if you use it the way it was manufactured to be used, you'll definitely die. But you still have it with us, right? So if you swing that way, then you're making it even, even worse. So from a public health perspective, what we're trying to do with legalizing in Canada is ensure that we've legalized it, but with very strict regulation, so that it's allowed for, for people to use, but there's regulations around it that make sure that you're getting the best, good quality, to make sure that it's controlled, you can track from seed, like you're doing in Canada, you can track it from seed to, to the product itself. And there's, there are many regulations around how you promote it, how you sell it, where you sell it, and things like that. Now, that's, that's the idea that we're going with as a, as a country. But in the way that it's being rolled out and the way our democracy is, there are many nuances as to how that will roll out. So we are in a situation whereby we have a federal experiment with very different models across the different provinces. So like in Nova Scotia, you'll find we have a government monopoly selling it, but in other parts of the, of the country, there'll be privatized sales, there'll be a mix of the two. So it's an experiment that we're involved in, and there are various levels of government that need to play a part in that. You might ask yourself, "Have we moved from where it's illegal, that it's being sold somewhere else, and now we've corporatized it, and the faces have changed, but the, the deal still remains the same?" We're still yet to know for sure. Now, the other reasons why we are, we are legalizing and regulating is that when we had it as an illegal product, prohibition was not very successful for us. Our children and youth were using cannabis, and in fact, Canada was one of the highest, had the highest uses of cannabis amongst 15 to 24-year-olds around the world. So basically, prohibition was not serving us right. The risks and harms of cannabis, and they do exist, some people might say, "No," they are lower than tobacco or alcohol. So from that perspective, doesn't really make any sense to make it illegal. And then the other idea, that cannabis should be separated from the illicit market, whereby, yes, you've made it legal, but a lot of, a lot of, many gangs and basically, there's a lot of crime attached to that. So by making it illegal, you're not necessarily helping the larger idea around creating a safe and secure country, if that's what we're looking for. And then the resources that we spend on enforcement are better used elsewhere, and this debate has been had across the course of time. So that's probably, maybe in large terms, the rationale for legalization. Now, from a federal perspective, there was a task force that was launched back in 2016 that produced a comprehensive report. I've put in links in there, so that if you go to that, to that presentation, you can be able to see all those documents that are there. All this culminated in the federal government producing Bill C-45 and Bill C-46. Bill C-45 is the Cannabis Act. Bill C-46 changed the driving, driving laws to a certain extent, to ensure that we're able to cap any harms that come from that perspective. Now, Health Canada also has regulations whereby they cover things like production, processing, advertising, and the commercial aspects of it. So it's still part of the, part of the regulations. And then provincially, Nova Scotia, just like many other provinces, has its own act whereby it stipulates how it will be sold, because provincial governments are tasked with retail and distribution. So we have the Cannabis Control Act, and then from a, I guess, use perspective, the provincial law around smoke-free places was revamped to ensure that cannabis is in place. And at municipal level, I think you've also done the same to ensure that cannabis is captured. We've been having, like I said, we've been having conversations locally with municipalities, with partners, to just figure out what can we do locally to ensure that there are more protections over and above what the federal and provincial government has put in place. We have, we held sessions whereby we're trying to create enough capacity on the ground around the issue, so that they can understand what the challenges envisioned to be, and what communities want to do to move things forward. So we've been talking about, well, are there things like rezoning, bylaw changes, and things like that, to ensure that there's health protections? And I think it's based on that, that the idea to have a presentation or talk to you folks came about, to think about, well, what protections, other than what's already in place, can we, can we institute? Now, with all this being done, what, we legalized cannabis back in 2017, but edibles are not legal yet. As an individual, you could go and buy cannabis oil or cannabis products and take them home and make your own edibles, if you wished, but federally, they're not legal, but they'll become legal by October 2019. And the reason why I'm highlighting that is that that changes things a little bit in that, from, from the whole industry, edibles is the area that can, has a significant commercialization potential, whereby industry might be able to, in many ways, be able to capitalize on the many different kinds of products that are in existence. So the federal government has, has come out with sort of a framework around how they will, how they will regulate it, and Health Canada went through a consultation process. They asked for feedback from, from various folks. The Health Authority did its own submission. I believe many municipalities across the province that, that might have had an issue with, got an opportunity to, to input to that. I've just put out maybe a summary of what it entails. They've covered things like THC limit. THC is the psychoactive component in cannabis, so there are limits to that. There are product rules as to what kind of products or how they can be packaged and things like that. They talk about packaging. The idea is to get cannabis to be plain packaged, as opposed to being very flashy packages that are attractive and things like that. Labeling and how that labeling should be, and a few more additives in there. Now, the one thing that I'd like to point out is, in as much as federally we have all, all these things defined, there potentially still things I would call like loopholes in there, that with that commercialization potential, there might be local impacts that we might face. So things like advertising, in as much as the federal government has done its best to ensure that they've covered it, there are things locally that you might be, be able to do over and above to ensure, for instance, advertising targeting youth and children doesn't happen, because it's not, it's not very explicit. children doesn't happen because it's not, uh, it's not very explicit. The, uh, commercial interest may still find a way or loopholes to, to get their advertising in, and we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, I think I've already talked about this. Uh, I put it in there, just, this in there, that just to give you an idea of what's happening across the border, south of the border, in terms of how, oh, uh, cannabis edible products look like. Our hope is that we don't get this kind of scenario, uh, facing us. Uh, what we have as regulations in place right now gives us some kind of protection. We're not, we're not yet sure whether that's the protection we'll get, or there will still be some slippage, uh, 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 over the course of time. But that's, that's basically what you'd be, you might be able to see, uh, when you talk about cannabis edibles. I'm, I'm highlighting this, uh, because it's, from, from a health promotion perspective is a, is a huge concern for us. The, the rates of vaping, um, are, are, are going very high, not just in, 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 in Canada, but, uh, down, down south in the, in the US. And there's a huge concern for us there because cannabis can be, potentially can be, uh, put in these pods. And the way that the anecdotal reports we've gotten from, uh, the high schools around is that some people will say half our students are vaping in the high schools. Now, we, we don't know whether that is true. One of the challenges we have in Nova Scotia, we used to collect data, uh, in, in, in our schools around substance use, but since twenty twelve, we're not collecting data anymore. So it's difficult to find local data that tells us, well, these are the, these are the rates. So that's something for, for you folks to, to think about. And the way, al- although the federal government is trying to catch up and, and ensure that they can limit how things like Juul and other of their products are marketed, we're not there yet. So they still have that opportunity between now and when regulations step in properly to market and, and, and to a certain extent, capture the market before any regulations come in place. So, uh, something to keep an eye, an eye out for. Over and above the edibles, uh, Health Canada is, has launched, um, a consultation around cannabis health products. Uh, they're still a, a little bit vague as to what that will be, but the idea is that , uh, folks might want cannabis products that do not require a prescription from a doctor, um, or a vet, a, a, a vet if it's, if it's for, for their pets. And so there's, there's a consultation going on there. Uh, why I'm flagging it, it's another area that has potential for commercialization because now potentially there might be less regulation in that space. So where that, where they'll be sold and how they'll be sold, we are not sure, but it's increased, I guess, cannabis availability in the community. With all this being said, um, one, one of our challenges is that the profit mandate most of the time trumps public health interests. So the more profits corporations will seek, uh, public health might be impacted in a, in a negative perspective, especially when we, when we're thinking about substances. We've seen it with other substances like tobacco, like alcohol. And so reconciling these two is always a challenge. And I know at, at this table, that also becomes a challenge because you, there's also the economic side of things. You want communities to be vibrant, you want communities to have opportunities that all other communities have. For instance, in Queens, we have acolytes. It's a good, it's an economic driver there, but how do you, how do you ensure that the harms that might come along with that substance are, are not experienced? So, ke- keeping that in mind, I, I just want to put forward some considerations that you might want to think about. Time, okay? Um, what's around us shapes us. I know we have, we want advertising funds. Hopefully, we don't get to see things like this in our local community. We need to protect our youth and children in terms of where advertising shows up, access and availability. At the moment, the, the provincial government has just come out and talked about ensuring that you, uh, you can only get these products at the NSLC. That might change with provincial government changes. So what protections can we put in place so that that doesn't happen, that we have a proliferation of these, uh, dispensaries all over the place? Uh, we, we recommend a regional model whereby it's a monopoly, uh, with, with no colocation. I know in Nova Scotia, we have colocation, but if we're going to expand, maybe we should not collocate. We need people to, to help us in that advocacy. I had to rush through, but, uh, I just wanted to put it out there that there are some things that council can do that I think if you give us an opportunity, we might be able to explore and bring to the table for you folks to consider. So this is just an opportunity for us to present and, uh, for you, for you folks to have a discussion as to how you want us to move forward.
Thank you, Francis.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'll open the floor to questions. I'll just say probably what, what becomes obvious to me is this is a federally and provincially regulated product where the rules are currently dictated by the two other levels of government. So, um, I understand what you're saying in the, in the presentation, and those of us who sit around, um, the Bridgewater Police Commission, um, we kind of got a presentation from the chief on, on the different products, what happens when, when edibles are on the market and, and how they're going to be, uh, I was gonna say marketed, but rather not marketed. Um, things like they can't be shaped in anything that could be enticing for a child, things like that. Um, but, but just going through your presentation, I, I, I'm trying to figure out where, where we play a role when it's so heavily regulated by the other two levels of government.
From my perspective, where I think you, 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 you might be able to add to what's already in place. So things like advertising, where will you allow advertising to happen on, on cannabis? How can you at least limit how much advertising, especially in places where youth and children congregate? Uh, one of the ideas that we'd like to propose is if you think about places in, in, in the town of Bridgewater whereby you, youth and children might, might be able to see things like advertising, are you able to restrict how much advertising of cannabis happens in those places? We've talked about hea- healthy school zones, for example, if you think about, uh, the one school that you have and maybe one that's very close to, to Bridgewater, are there protections you can put in place there? Uh, the other idea is around, right now, it's being sold at, uh, NSLC, but if a, a different government comes in and decides, well, we'll privatize it, uh, you might get a proliferation that you do not necessarily want to invite. Uh, I know that, that there are certain businesses that you designated must occur only in the business park. Will you be able to consider cannabis retail to be one of those whereby it doesn't just happen a- anywhere so that you don't have a case where somebody goes right across from the school, right across, across from a daycare, decides, well, my building is, I can, I can decide to convert this into a residential commercial space and do things like that. So things like that to consider and see whether you'd be interested.
Questions from members of council? No, all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next delegation is Jane, uh, from the Campaign to Protect Offshore Nova Scotia, and specifically on offshore drilling.
Thanks, Jane. So while we're waiting for our presentation, I'd like to say that I'm here with Peter Puxley as well from the Campaign to Protect Offshore Nova Scotia. And if everybody who's here to support our presentation would just wave at the council. Hi, guys. Two, four, six, we've got eight folks here, um, that the people online can't see, but we are well supported in the community. And I think it's really important that we acknowledge that people have taken their time instead of being on the beach this evening to be in council chambers.
Can we just pause for a couple minutes?
This is what I dreamed about last night. Talk to you. It's a very important subject. My name is Peter Puxley. Uh, with me is Jane Morrell, a resident of Bridgewater. I live not far outside town, but I shop here. Uh, we're members of the Campaign to Protect Offshore Nova Scotia, or SEPONs as it's better known. And this evening, we're going to ask you to pass a motion calling for a full, independent public inquiry into the risks of offshore drilling. We know climate change mitigation and adaptation have been a focus of your planning department, your sustainable Bridgewater programs, and now the award-winning energies, energized Bridgewater are things to be proud of, and we congratulate you. SEPONs is a citizens group seeking to protect Nova Scotia from the risks of offshore exploration. We're a project of the South Shore Chapter of the Council of Canadians and part of the Offshore Alliance, a founding member of the Offshore Alliance, a coalition of eighteen environmental, community, and fishery groups, particularly here on the South Shore. We organized in twenty sixteen when we were struck by the lack of informed public involvement in offshore development decisions. We discovered that the regulator, the Canada Nova Scotia Offshore Petroleum Board, or the CNSOPB, is dominated by oil industry veterans, well-meaning but steeped in the culture of that industry, and with a conflicting mandate of both regulating and promoting the offshore oil and gas exploration. As a result, they often ignore relevant science unfavorable to the industry. This matters to you and me. Why? Because it is our communities that bear the lion's share of the risk of a disaster in the offshore. As such, we have the right to be informed of the best science available and the right to be part of offshore development decisions. My ancestors settled in Barrington almost two hundred and fifty years ago, actually before the house that we were discussing earlier this evening was built. This coast and this ocean are in my blood. And in my lifetime, I've witnessed the ecological disaster of the disappearance of the inshore fishery and the livelihoods that depended on it. Now, we could rebuild that fishery today if we had the political will. True, we have a healthy lobster fishery, but I wouldn't take that for granted. Ignoring the best science was a major cause of the collapse of the fishery. And today, our oil regulators are ignoring the latest science with similar catastrophic risk. Now Jane is going to explore that matter of risk. What is the risk of an oil spill? And if there is indeed a risk, is it worth it?
Thanks, Peter. All right, I'm, I'm going to go through this very quickly. It's just a very summary, um, look at the risks because there's just so much of it in so little time. So let's talk about the risk of accidents. Accidents are not restricted to oil spills. Just in the East Coast in the last three years, we've seen the following accidents. A huge, heavy pipe was dropped to the ocean floor, narrowly missing the wellhead. These are pipes the size of school buses, imagine them, two kilometers end to end. A massive leak of heavily toxic drilling mud that we're told is non-toxic, but contains ingredients like diesel. And the biggest crude spill in Newfoundland history. Husky has subsequently admitted that this spill cannot be cleaned up. And please hear me, those pipes, all of that mud, and not a single liter of that oil was recovered, despite the fact that risk assessments that are given to our regulator say that not only are accidents highly unlikely, but that they can clean up after themselves if they happen. Just gonna fast forward to this. This is the Deepwater Horizon spill depicted as if it had happened in Nova Scotia. That's the massive disaster that happened in the Gulf of Mexico almost a decade ago. Eleven people died in that explosion. Tourism and fishery industries have not recovered almost a decade later, and the cleanup costs now approach one hundred billion dollars. We'd like to think that BP has learned its lesson from that massive disaster, but the evidence doesn't support that. This is a photo of Dr. Robert B. He's a forty-year veteran of the oil and gas industry. He's an engineer who specializes in risk assessment. The Australian government hired Dr. B to review offshore drilling applications for sites in its place called the Great Australian Bite. He found BP's risk assessment was inadequate. It did not meet accepted safety standards. Australia found the risks unacceptable and asked BP to meet recognized standards. Instead, BP withdrew its application, and their next stop was Nova Scotia. Here, our regulations are more relaxed. Dr. B looked at that application, and he said, quote, "It brought a chill to my blood." He concluded that given the treacherous conditions in the North Atlantic, that BP significantly underestimated the likelihood of an uncontrolled blowout by a factor of between ten and one hundred, which we tried to show here in this graph. Now, the, the provincial government is aggressively and vigorously promoting oil and gas exploration as the great boon for Nova Scotia. And we all want prosperity, so let's look at the numbers. Over sixteen years, the total oil and gas royalties were one point nine billion dollars. A number that's not on that screen is last year's seafood exports of two billion dollars. Ocean-based tourism in twenty seventeen, which includes the Bridgewater Marina, brought in two point seven billion dollars. That money stays in our communities. The fishery is a traditional, sustainable, and growing economy with a neck economic spinoffs of three to one and at times four to one. The profits from oil and gas leave the province and royalties go directly into the provincial purse. And when it comes to jobs, the oil industry is nowhere near competitive with the fisheries and tourism. Their highest estimate of jobs creation is four hundred persons. Fisheries, as we see here, seven, over seventeen thousand, and tourism, forty-three thousand. Let's look a little bit further into the fishery. See if I can find this map for you. Oh, going the wrong way, pardon me. So this map is the future sites that are being put up for lease for the oil and gas industry. If you look carefully, the purple stripes are marine-protected areas where fishery, fishing is not allowed. These oil drilling sites are directly adjacent to and sometimes completely surrounding them. The busiest area in the area that says twenty twenty, that is Sable Island. It's completely surrounded by exploratory wells. The one that worries me the most is the purple one directly adjacent to Saint, to George's Bank. Now, take a look at that map, and then we're going to compare it to this map. The bottom left-hand corner is lobster density map provided by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. These leased sites are directly over top of those fishing areas and where the lobster live. And right next to, the top right, is the And right next to, the top right, is the baby lobsters. That's where they are. So as I said, the site that gives me the most pause is this purple site at the bottom left, which is directly adjacent to George's Bank, our most lucrative and protected fishery area. This is where Equinor from Norway wants to do seismic testing. And what people don't realize is that just looking for oil can put those underwater ecosystems at risk. Seismic testing employs dozens of air cannons fired every 10 seconds for months at a time. Those air blasts are powerful enough to penetrate more than two kilometers of water and then many more kilometers into the earth's crust. They can be the loudest background noise for up to 4,000 kilometers away. The effects on the life in the water is catastrophic for mammals, all the way down to the base of the food chain, the plankton. It damages their communication systems. They can't find each other, their mates, their food, or escape predators. And most horrifying, seismic testing causes brain hemorrhaging and deafness in whales. Only chemical and nuclear explosions are louder. That's my time. And I'll just finish by saying I can't conclude that, from any environmental, social, or economic perspective, that oil and gas exploration in offshore Nova Scotia is worth the risk. Thanks.
So today, offshore decision-making deprives us of the kinds of facts that Jane's just placed before you and excludes us from the decisions. We have a role to play, but we need all the facts on the table. A full, independent, public inquiry, in our opinion, into the risks of offshore oil exploration is the right answer. It would look not just at the oil industry, but also the conditions that ensure our traditional sectors thrive. To allow drilling without such study is reckless. We need a moratorium until an inquiry has completed its report and made its recommendations. And we have two local models for such an inquiry. In the 1980s, when Texaco wanted to explore on the crucial George's Bank fishery, there was a public outcry. And in response, Ottawa and Nova Scotia named a panel to examine the state of knowledge about the potential risks of oil exploration on George's Bank. And the panel made public education, unlike the CNSOPB, made public education a priority with an unprecedented series of workshops, meetings, and public hearings in the communities most affected. Its process remains a model for public involvement today. The panel concluded that the science at that time, and it hasn't changed a lot, was inadequate and the risks too great, and it opted for precaution, recommending a moratorium, which is still in effect today. Then we had a public inquiry into fracking with similar community participation and another moratorium. Now, why should municipalities like Bridgewater take a stand? This isn't a question of jurisdiction. Offshore exploration threatens the economic and environmental health of this community and rural communities all the way down the south and southwestern shore of Nova Scotia. And municipalities provide our most accessible democracy, and I think this is becoming more and more evident every day. Municipalities are taking stands. They are listening to their citizens in a way that the higher orders of government don't appear to be. They played a vital role in both the inquiries I cited, as indeed they had a right and responsibility to do. And it was municipal governments that were responsible for Obama's moratorium on drilling along the US Atlantic coast. Today, your citizens are ignored by the CNSOPB. Our municipalities need to defend their own and their citizens' right to inform participation in decisions so crucial to our future. We ask your council to pass a motion calling for a full, independent, public inquiry into offshore oil and gas development. We've been meeting with many councils along the South Shore and southwestern shore and up into the valley. And to date, nine municipalities have passed our proposed motion, and three others have written strong letters to government officials. We hope that you will join us. And we appreciate this opportunity to meet with you and look forward to answering your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Questions from members of council?
When will, excuse me, when will leases be given to, if they are given? What's the timeline?
The CNSOPB announces new areas where it will entertain applications for leases on a periodic basis. The last one was around Sable Island. In fact, there were no bids that came forward at that time. They have approved Equinor's seismic proposals for adjacent to George's Bank. Equinor is holding off beginning its work there for reasons unknown to us, but they might have started this summer. They've chosen to delay that. So we're hoping to try and close the door before they begin what will be a very damaging exercise. But there will be others. And the thing about Nova Scotia, all of the offshore is open for exploration. In Norway, it's all closed until the companies interested make the case before not just parliament, but all kinds of public interest organizations have a say. So it's a very rigorous process they have in Norway. Here, we say it's all open, and just come and make your bids.
Any other questions? So seriously, we don't make motions the same night we receive information. It gives us some time to process it, ask questions. If we have more questions before it comes back to council, then we will filter those through staff to come back and either ask more information from your group or we'll seek information, perhaps even from the other municipalities that have made this decision, just to hear their side of that.
I will send Sandra the list of those municipalities and the resolutions that they passed.
Thank you very much. Just before they go, any other questions for members of council?
So it will come back to council whether we approve it or not. There will be something come back to our council?
The request has been made to pass a motion, so...
The package that went out to councillors this week included that resolution, and I'm sure Sandra can send that around again.
We'd be happy to snow you with all kinds of other information.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that want to appear as a delegation for any other topics? Just make sure you give us your name for the record, please.
All right. Hi, I'm Garrett Lawton, a local area resident. I don't live in Bridgewater, but like many people who live around Bridgewater, I do use Bridgewater to meet my shopping needs and tend to drive through Bridgewater most every day. Now, I'm going to get right to the issue here. Incidentally, I came to council six months ago. A lot of things have happened in those six months, but I don't know whether you had given any consideration to addressing the issue. Does anyone remember?
The traffic lights.
The traffic lights, yeah. The traffic lights are still an issue. Not only the one that I brought to attention of council at that point, but since then, the Victoria and York intersection? Same thing. Goes to flashing green, left turn when no one is there, to turn left. And I just personally, it affects me. And it affects everyone who passes through that intersection. Also, King and Old Bridge? Same thing. Left turn, green, whether or not there is anyone there. So I don't know if the sensing equipment was inadequate or it's malfunctioning. Maybe an upgrade would be in order. Oh, and I wanted to say congratulations on the Smart Cities. Bridgewater deserves that. And you guys hopefully will use that money to help reduce emissions. And I believe that's one of the targeted goals of the Smart Cities challenge. And this is a great opportunity. Upgrading the traffic sensing equipment is a great opportunity for you guys to reduce emissions of vehicles traveling through town. And not only will it reduce emissions, it's also going to bolster the reputation of Bridgewater as a community that cares about the people who are using the space. So I guess also people will be less stressed and generally have a better enjoyment of the space. So the benefits of upgrading this traffic sensing equipment are clear to me. And I don't want to be like a curmudgeon complaining about things all the time, but please, when people say disparaging things about Bridgewater from the area, it does happen. I tell them this is a community that's on the up and up. And I want you guys to prove me right and fix this traffic light issue. Now, this is my personal recommendation. I'm no expert on this matter, but there are experts on this matter. What I would recommend that you do is to hire an independent, this is another person who's, I'm going to tell you how to spend your money here. You hire somebody who's going to analyze the traffic flows in town. They're going to give the timing of lights careful consideration so that the primary direction of flow of traffic will have a longer light cycle. And I'm sure like some, I don't mean to speak disparagingly about the work that has taken place. Most traffic flow is great. And I don't want to seem like I just have a problem with how things are. Because it's a great place to live. You guys are doing a great job. But the traffic lights, we can use some smart traffic lights. And maybe you could think about putting some of that smart money towards fixing the traffic lights. And I guess that's it.
I appreciate you coming back. I know, I mean, the traffic authority's here. I don't want to, Larry, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we did inquire about the lights the last time you were here, and there is a problem with the loop that senses the traffic. And that intersection is slated for some work in a couple of years.
Next year.
This year, next year.
Next year.
Okay. So the rationale was, we're going to fix it at that time. It didn't make sense to tear it all up, correct the loops, put it back, and then tear it all up again.
Invest in the good equipment. You know, get the good loops this time.
Yeah. So that was that one. And we do know that there's a problem at York and Victoria, and that one is kind of on the radar as well.
Great, okay. And the King and Old Bridge?
So that one...
That one, we can, I'll have staff check on that one.
Okay, I mean, there's other, there's like, I mean, I don't want to like bore you with the details of my analysis of how I think the traffic flow of Bridgewater should be like, because I'm not an expert. I just, I noticed that there were these problems, and I thought maybe should take the opportunity to bring them to the attention of the council.
That's always important for people to let us know, because I didn't know the one at King and Old Bridge was doing that. And so if staff didn't know, because no one else had said anything, then this is how we know. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Well, keep up the good work, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other members of the public wish to speak to council? All right, moving along. We have the minutes of June 10th, 2019, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions? Anything there? Hearing none, we'll declare those as passed. We'll go down to planning items, new provincial regulations, minimum planning standards for the whole province, so others can join us.
Correct. So in October of 2018, the province of Nova Scotia passed Bill 58, which amends the Municipal Government Act and requires, it does a few things under the Planning and Development section of the Municipal Government Act, which is Part 8. And one of those is to make land use planning mandatory for all municipalities. Up until this point, it was a voluntary exercise. And they've established minimum requirements in regulation. And so this spring, in April, they released the draft regulations for comment. The comment period closes at the end of this week. And so I prepared a report for you that you have in front of you tonight and propose a draft letter to respond to the province about the proposed regulations. So first, you know, it's something that many municipalities, we've had a zoning bylaw since August 27th, 1975, which is our current municipal planning strategy. We've been doing planning for a long time here and have robust planning regulations. Whereas many other towns, many of the municipalities across Nova Scotia did not have any or may have just had a single-use plan to deal with wind turbine siting, for example. So these regulations are mostly aimed at larger rural municipalities who do not have planning in place. And so they would like to see all municipalities meet the statements of provincial interest, which have been in place since the Municipal Government Act came in in 1999. And many smaller towns may have an older plan that predated the Municipal Government Act. And so this legislation and these regulations now require that everybody come up to speed, everybody respond to the statements of provincial interest from the province, which there are five of them, if they apply. We already meet all of that. And the other element to the regulations are to require engagement between abutting municipalities. So we have only one municipality that we abut, the District of Lunenburg. However, the District of Lunenburg abuts, I believe, seven different municipalities. So we've already had at the staff level some discussions between the different municipalities within Lunenburg County as a whole about working together on some best practice around engagement with each other. And so there's now regulation around at what point in the process it's changed, what point in the process that we are to engage and consider the needs of our neighboring municipalities when doing amendments to our own policies. In the report, when I reviewed the regulations, there's still some clarifications on the different powers that they have put into the regulations. We had the Provincial Director of Planning come down and meet with staff, planning staff, from across Lunenburg County. And there's a few questions that are, the regulations are still a bit gray. But ultimately, for the town of Bridgewater, our planning, our planning policies that council have in place right now exceed the minimum requirements for planning that will be set out by these regulations and this change in legislation. So we meet it. We exceed it, actually. And so we, in the letter, I suggest sort of commending them for making planning requirement, but also for continuing to keep the regulations enabling, so making it mandatory on certain elements, but also allowing for a variety of tools so that we can continue to do the type of robust and forward-thinking planning that we have been doing in this town. Ultimately, what's there?
Any questions from members of council on that? With the lack of these planning standards in other municipalities and rural municipalities, I'm just looking at the issues they had in Ontario and Quebec and other problems with flooding. We've had issues with flooding in rural municipalities here. Is it that lack of those planning standards that lead to people building on floodplains or building like...
That's part of it.
As we go down this road of severe weather and severe climate change, which we're in it, or not approaching, we're in it, this is, like, should this not just be absolutely mandatory to avoid people building where they shouldn't be building for the risk of their safety and safety of others?
Correct. And there's also coastal legislation that is, and regulations, that is forthcoming. We haven't seen any draft regulations, but there is a coastal act and regulations, but those draft regulations have not been proclaimed.
I just think not having these set in your municipality is opening yourself up to the risk of allowing people to build in harm's way.
So just coming to mind, so there may be something in there that addresses this, but in other departments, we see these kind of minimal, right? I can't get the words out. Minimum regulations increase over years. And it comes with, certainly enhances safety and the regulations. There are reasons for it, but it increases costs and capacity and so on. Is there anything that we can suggest to consult with municipalities about how that's handled? So that it's not just kind of dumped on us and we have to figure out in a budget cycle, like, how to handle that?
That's a good question. There are some, again, some of the requirements or some of the elements of this regulation are still kind of gray, in my opinion. We're not entirely sure what they mean on some of those things. But they're enabling. They're not under the required element. So at this point, you know, from a town of Bridgewater perspective, there's no additional work or resource impact to us. For our neighboring municipality, it's fairly significant because they will have to undertake, within three years, create a municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. So it varies depending on the, I guess, the resources with... So for, it varies depending on the, I guess, the resources within each municipality across the province, and that's part of, yeah, I'm not sure how the province has been trying to address that. For us, it should not result in any increase.
So two drafts have gone out, and like, is there a third draft that's imminent, or you don't, we're not?
There's only one draft that has come out, the legislative, well, there was, last year at this time, there was a brief consultation on the idea of the legislation, then the legislation came out and passed all three readings of the province last fall, and then it has not yet been proclaimed, so it's not law yet. They were waiting for the regulations before they proclaimed it, because they had to have the regulations to implement it.
Okay.
It's like having a land use bylaw that implements your planning strategy, same thing. So they, this is just the draft, this is the one time to comment on the draft regulations. The province is hoping to have the regulations finalized by the end of summer, early fall. I will say, these are ministerial regulations, so it's the Minister of Municipal Affairs who gets to make the ultimate decision, not cabinet, not executive council, so just the one minister is able to make these regulations. That is a bit of a risk than a number, I understand from talking to some colleagues at a conference last week, that many other municipalities are raising that as a potential risk. I didn't have that in my, in the draft letter, and if you wanted to put that in, we could, we could change it.
More questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, direct staff, to draft a letter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, for the mayor to send, outlining our support for minimum planning standards to be required across the province and identify items for clarification.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor McDonald.
I assume the draft that's there is the draft you will sign, other than maybe a...
Do we want that change to, to note the concern that this is a decision being made just by the?
Minister.
Minister?
I think that's fair.
Does anyone have any objections to adding that? That does sound a bit like an issue to me, so if we can just make that change. We have a mover and a secondor, any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, are those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Down to reports and recommendations, we have the building report for May of 2019. Looking at the building value estimates graph, that goes up and up, so that's good. Building permits year-to-date are up, so that's good, we're busy, busy town, and as always, if there are any questions, to direct those to Mr. Feener, so he can redirect those to probably Mr. Hopkins, or someone else. Any questions from members of council?
No.
No, continues to be a good news story in the town of Bridgewater. Waste water treatment plant upgrades, additional costs. Mr. Feener, are you speaking to that one?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Staff are seeking council's approval to increase the capital budget for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades to 2.125 million, to be funded by a combination of the wastewater reserve and deferring the capital budget to replace the digester building roof to a future year. The anticipated increase is primarily due to the cost for sludge disposal for a longer construction schedule and an allowance to increase the contingency by $50,000 to address additional unforeseen issues.
I have a question. Sludge disposal, when the cost goes up, I understand there's obviously a trucking cost, if there's more sludge, that there's more, but is it a tipping fee cost as well that's in there?
We do pay for disposal fees as well as trucking fees, yes.
And do we pay our, like, the cost, like, we own a portion of that waste site? Do we pay the tipping fee that the public pays, or do we pay a tipping fee that reflects that we are part owners of that facility?
Staff reached out to various facilities to see where best, or the most economical location would be to dispose of. I can't honestly tell you which facility is planned to be used, but we are looking for the most economical solution.
And our own, like I say, our own, I'm talking about the one that the MJSB manages, that's where we'd normally send the sludge, would it not be?
We'd pay the partner rate, which is the inside rate, so it would be the same as what our other partners would pay, that's what it would be charged.
That was my question, like, we're not paying the public fee for, like, what a septic truck would pay or anything, we're paying a different, if we use that facility, we would pay our own rate. Okay. That was my question.
Well, here, perhaps a silly question, but what's the role of the digester roof other than to cover it?
It's basically, well, the building roof that we're deferring?
Yeah.
Well, that's...
Is it just, just a building roof?
Correct. It's just a building roof.
Okay.
It's not the digester cover that we are in the process of replacing.
Okay.
This is the building roof.
Okay.
All right. Fair enough. That was my question. Okay, that's good. Are there any other questions?
Do I have a motion, Your Worship?
Did you have a question?
Yeah, well, not really, I think I know the answer, because I read the document, but with a project that big, how much is the contingency percentage set at, so that something like this comes up, you have some money that's built in, is it 10%? 5%?
It does vary depending on the project.
I would think the bigger the project, the more contingency, the more to rely off of this stuff.
The bigger and the more complex, yes, and we've already seen some expenditures that we have to address that would consume most of the contingency that was originally there, so we'd just like to have some cushion, I guess, that if more unforeseen issues come up, we have the ability to make those corrections as well.
So based on history, if we find out each time that we don't have enough contingency, maybe we should upfront load more contingency into the project.
There was an assumption that some of our maintenance budget may have been able to address some of these potential issues, but what we're seeing because of the age of the facility and the condition, that we don't feel that's going to be sufficient, so we're looking for additional contingency.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Worship, I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve an increase in the overall project budget to 2,125,000 dollars, which is the result of 175,000 in additional costs, was funding provided by a combination of the wastewater reserve, 100,000 dollars, and capital reserves, 75,000 dollars, to be made available by delaying the capital budget project digester roof cover, and the elimination of the capital budget for the digester roof.
Thank you, Cam, secondor please. Counselor Frazier, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item is notice, revisions to Policy 94, hospitality.
So this is a notice that's required under the Municipal Government Act, council give notice to itself that at the next regularly scheduled meeting of Town Council, which is July 8th, consideration will be given to a revised hospitality policy, number 94. It's pretty much a completely revised policy, the previous policy didn't recognize that the town did have hospitality expenses, the definition of hospitality can be events that we host, like the volunteer recognition and reception events, and those types of things, so this, the policy has been revised to recognize that we do have hospitality, put parameters around hospitality, what's considered to be eligible expense, what's not, the procedure for having hospitality expenses approved with the preference prior to the expense occurring, and then the approval, who approves what, who approves mine, who would approve our councillors, or the mayors, or the towns overall. And so that's all set out in the policy, so at the next meeting, unless there's an objection now, the next meeting council would consider approval of that.
Any questions about that? Let's press forward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Frazier?
Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the July 8th, 2019 council meeting, amendments to Policy 94, hospitality will be considered to provide clear directions with respect to claims, authorizations, and reporting of hospitality expenses.
Thank you, have a secondor please. Counselor Thorburn, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item is RFP 2019-03, local energy financing systems.
Yes, thank you. Back in February of this year, council received a scoping study that looked at a broad range of traditional and innovative financing mechanisms for our energy work and energy transition, and at that time, staff recommended, and council accepted that recommendation, that we go further to investigate energy service companies, or ESCOs, as they're referred to, and community economic development investment funds, or CDFs. And so these are cornerstone pieces to sort of capitalize the projects in our community energy investment plan, specifically the community scale renewable energy systems and the neighborhood retrofit programs, and there's a large overlap between our community energy investment plan projects like these, as well as our smart cities capitalization work that we've also talked about. So it sort of brings together those two priorities, but we require an understanding of these mechanisms before we dive into doing business plans. So we have the budget funded through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, MCIP program, and through the provincial low-carbon communities, and we put out this RFP to develop a detailed understanding of business description, market assessment, financial strategies, and requirements, projections for CDF and ESCO tools as a way to capitalize solar and retrofit options. So we had a lot of interest in this, so there were 30-plus RFP requests, we received three proposals, all were qualified to do the work, but it really came down to two, and in the end came down to the one, which is recommended for you based on their clear understanding of the work, a diverse and highly qualified team, they've worked with municipalities to undertake similar scope of work, and they had a very detailed methodology in terms of how they're going to approach it, so.
Any questions for the director on that? Counselor McDonald, yes, prepared to make a motion? Perfect, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the staff request to award RFP 2019-03, detailed operational study, local energy financing systems, to Veritera Group, environmental strategies, and partner Dunskey Energy Consulting with the proposal price of 32,000 dollars plus HST as outlined in Document 19-084.
Great, thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Another notice, policy 89, fees, you know, I've sat around this table for almost 11 years, I don't remember doing notices until this year, do you?
When we're doing a lot.
You can thank me for that.
Wow. All right, fees.
Yeah, so this is essentially a notice that at the next council meeting, there will be proposed revisions to the town's fee policy for consideration, we'll be looking at the public sewer rate charges, removing those from the fee policy, if you remember they're to be established in your bylaw, and in the bylaw, we've stated that council will establish the fees using one of several different methodologies, and set that at budget time by motion. So we're removing those from the fee policy itself, we'll be adding fees for curb cuts for consideration, and a fee for staff to perform work with the vacuum sweeper truck on private property. So those are two, one fee that's not there, and then another fee we'd be enending and revising for, and proposing that at the July 8th council meeting for consideration.
All right, thank you. Yes?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act, that at the July 8th, 2019 council meeting, amendments to Policy 89, fees will be considered to remove the public sewer rate charges, amend the fees for curb cuts, and add a fee for staff to perform work with a sweeper truck on private property.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion? Yes, do we get many calls for sweeper trucks on private property? What are the, what are the uses of them?
It's just typically one business in town, once a year, prior to painting the parking lot.
Ah, okay. Good question. All right, we've had a mover and a secondor, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. First reading, repeal of bylaw 25, the anti-noise bylaw, so this is, right away, I can just picture the, at the headline, so stay tuned for the story, though it's not, it's not what people think, we're not opening it up for a free-for-all to be as loud as you want all the time, so I'll make sure, into the microphone, make sure that everyone catches it.
Here's this one, all right. So, and review and request for events under our town property bylaw, I looked at the noise bylaw to see if there's any, anything that may be contrary to the noise bylaw, and this, this isn't the first time that this has come before council, we have a noise bylaw that was approved in 1983, and that noise bylaw essentially states, it's called anti-noise bylaws, it essentially states that there is not to be amplified sound on any street in the town between the hours of 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM, and then within the acceptable hours of nine o'clock in the morning and nine o'clock at night, you can apply for a license to have an activity carried on within the street that has amplified noise, so essentially no noise, amplified noise after 9:00 PM or before 9:00 AM on any street, that's what your bylaw says, so it doesn't deal with noise on private property and impacting an adjoining owner or neighborhood or anything like that, it's the street, and it's amplified noise. So discussions with staff with respects to that, it appears that the bylaw has not been enforced for a number of years, there have been events that have occurred on town property and within town streets that are contrary to the bylaw, and so if there's a bylaw in place that forever, for whatever reason, it could be just that it's been on the books for so long, and it's not enforced because, because of the provisions in the bylaw, it's best to repeal that bylaw if we're not going to enforce that bylaw, because it sets a false expectation to the public that there is this provision when in fact there isn't. Some of the events, or an event that would be an example of something that happens on the streets that's contrary to the bylaw, would be the Canada Day celebrations, where you have your street party, your street dance.
Street dance.
Kitchen party this year.
Fireworks.
Yeah, all kinds of fireworks, or anything, this says amplified sound, so it could be other noises, I guess, but for that reason, it's recommended that council consider the repeal of this bylaw. Now, to repeal a bylaw, you have to follow the same process you would if you were approving a bylaw, because there's a public interest in that. So first reading to repeal, and then we put notice in the papers stating that council is considering repealing the bylaw by second and final reading of that repeal. It's also recommended that, in addition to repealing that bylaw, that there be consideration given to a replacement bylaw of some sort, and that staff be directed to prepare a report that would outline possible options that could be considered in a noise bylaw for the town, including enforcement. It's my understanding that in 2013, council had considered the adoption of a new bylaw, that there was some concerns about enforcement, because I believe there were decibel readings and meters and those types of things required. So what I would suggest is that staff be directed to prepare that report, and in doing so, we would look at what other municipalities do, and how they are enforced, and do that consultation with, with bylaw enforcement as well, to see what's possible there, and you may also wish to engage the public in that process, that'd be a decision of council to make once we bring the options back, but there's definitely a public interest in this type of bylaw.
Counselor McDonald.
The Private Properties Act still protects people's homes and yards, yeah, so that's in place.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a disturbance of the peace type, yeah, so I did talk to our police chief about that, and they, they can pursue if there's complaints made at an unreasonable hour, they can, they can approach an individual or property owner about disturbance of the peace.
This is really just addressing our own property?
It could go beyond and address just noise activity in general, so some municipalities might, or some towns, control when people cut wood, like, you know, with chainsaws.
But the repealing of it really just addresses our issue with right now.
Right.
This is only one motion side, can there be more motions?
Second read?
Right, perfect, thank you. Someone prepared to make a motion, Counselor Frazier?
Yes, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the repeal of the anti-noise bylaw, Chapter 25, per Document 19-068A, and proceed to second reading of repeal of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on... of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Just to be clear again, this doesn't mean we're going to be opening it up for a free-for-all. This is just, we're just moving things so that we can, let's try, right, so we can make sure we're compliant with our own bylaw. There'd be a new bylaw, bylaw coming in. And this does not impact the Protection of Property Act, as Counselor McDonald uh pointed out, that it doesn't mean you can be at two o'clock in the morning banging a gong next to your neighbor's house. That would still be something that the police are going to be called for.
Unless you're Sanders' neighbor, then you can try it and see what happens. Not on Sunday night before we come here.
Okay. Any further questions?
Questions?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, under business arising and unfinished business, um, we have a carryover item here. Grants organizations, carrier being Goodwill Tour. Um, grant request. What is the will of council?
Would you like to have a motion, Your Worship? I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the grants to organization committee and deny the request for a grant for, from Caribbean Goodwill Tours.
You have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Discussion?
Yeah, simply put, it just did not qualify with the guidelines that we had in place, and particularly it was not a registered not-for-profit.
Yes?
I'm going to a bit of a question. Is there a period of time after which a decision is made that if there was information that, that was missing, that somebody could come back with that information, it would be reconsidered, or would it just automatically go to the next intake?
I would think it would be next intake.
Next intake, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for the explanation. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Um, we have a couple of items in camera to deal with in the next room. Otherwise, motion to adjourn. Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned. Thank you.